Good evening and welcome to the 577th regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission. This meeting is being held virtually through Zoom. The speaker list and agenda have been available on thecityoflaurel.org. And I have been provided with those speakers that have, or those people wishing to speak, signed up in advance. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Council President Sidnor.
President.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson.
I can see him. Rick, we can't hear you.
You're muted, Mr. Wilson.
Right hand corner.
Rick, so for those that may not see, let me state that we can see Rick on the screen. At this point, we cannot hear him. For purposes of vote, as we go forward, we can ask him for a hand signal if we cannot get his audio. Please continue, Ms. Quillan. I'm sorry for the interruption.
Mr. Kish.
Yeah.
Mr. Wellford.
Here. Here.
Thank you. Ms. Bonner. Ms. Bonner. Chairwoman Bateman.
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Agenda item two, approval of the minutes from the July 14, 2020 meeting. The minutes were distributed in advance to all members. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Bill Wellford, Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the minutes as received from staff.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman, John Kish here. I will second that motion.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wellford.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Chairwoman Bateman.
Yes, and Ms. Quillan, I would like to state that we had interruptions and everything. I would like to thank you for capturing those minutes in great form.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, you can go ahead. Were you going to say something?
No, go, close that out.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Before moving on to agenda item three, Mr. Wilson, do we have you with audio yet?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I restarted. Thank you. Sorry for the trouble.
No problem. And Ms. Bonner, do we have you with audio at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you would please make that note. And again, sorry for backtracking a little bit. Did you call our alternate, Mr. Smalls, when we did the roll call?
I did not. I don't think we typically are supposed to call him unless he's needed for a quorum.
Okay, unless there's any objection, I would like to at least make note so that it's in the record that he is on the call with us.
Noted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item three, the amended site and landscape plan application and resolution number 20-12-PC 14805 Baltimore Avenue, filed by Ingleside Staggers. Mr. Burrow, I believe you have the staff report.
Yes, I do. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Planning Commission members. This is Monte Burrow's Plan A2. amended site and landscape plan application was filed by Mr. Nguyen to construct a shed located at 14805 Baltimore Avenue, Laurel Merlin 20707. Under date of September 15, 2020, the applicant with a cover letter asking for comments were emailed with a memorandum to the City of Laurel departments. No department had issues with the application. On September 17, 2020, a letter explaining the nature of the application and advertising of the scheduled public hearing before the City of Laurel Planning Commission was sent by standard mail to contingent property owners. All return receipts were received. The file contains an affidavit signed by the applicant testing that a zoning sign has been placed on a subject property has remained and shall remain. It is recommended that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the amended site and landscape plan for 14805 Baltimore Avenue with the following condition. The applicant shall obtain all required City of Laurel building permit. That concludes the reading of the, Madam Chair, and I believe the applicant is on the line or phone for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing at 6:06 PM. I do not have anyone pre-signed up. As Mr. Burrow noted, the applicant is on. Does anyone have any questions or is there anyone wishing to speak?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure how the alternate is supposed to act in such situations, but I do have a question. I think it's more for staff than anyone else. And that question is, with this being a shed that's pretty much at the rear of this property, the city some time ago passed an ordinance to shield waste bins and that sort of thing. Is there any thought been given to perhaps, this is a shed that according to the applicants and the information I read is going to store personal items, lawn mowers, and other kinds of items to sort of shield that from Route 1, which is obviously a high visibility, high traffic, and it's our city center. So I was just curious if maybe any thought would be been given to some type of gate fencing, something to just sort of shield a shed in similar fashion to the way we shield them.
Councilman Small, just to answer your question. We don't treat sheds the same way as we do trash containers. That may be something in the future that we might think about, or I can go to my director and see how we would handle that. But at the moment, we don't treat it the same as trash containers. So at this time, it won't be shielded from Baltimore Avenue.
Thank you. However, and I think one of the reasons when we did the, when we did the sheds, let's see, Mike, yes, Simon. When we, I'm sorry, when we were doing the trash was to cover the look of that. And this shed does have front doors on it and all of that. So that I, to your point, we hope that those will stay closed and so that the appearance stays, stays nice.
Madam Chair, I can note that and make sure the applicant is aware of that concern by you guys. So I will make a notation to relay that information to him.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing at 6:09 PM. And if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion from the commissioners.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to approve amended site and landscape plan application and the resolution number 20-12-PC at 14805 Baltimore Avenue. It's filed by the applicant and including the technical report and the testimony of this commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner. Ms. Quillan, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Bonner.
Yeah.
Mr. Wellford.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Chairwoman Bateman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item four, special exception application number 907, Shell gas station 711 Baltimore Boulevard and 303 Gorman Avenue, filed by SMO Incorporated for recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Mr. Bu, sorry, Mr. Burrow, again, for your staff report, please.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and fellow Planning Commission members. This is again Monte Burrow's Plan A2. Special exception number 907 with a variance was filed on September 1, 2020 by SMO Incorporated, K. Renee Montgomery, to construct a gas station complex and to reduce the front and rear setbacks. The front setbacks would be reduced from 50 feet to 35.1 feet on Washington Boulevard, 50 feet to 34.1 feet on Gorman Avenue, and the rear setbacks from 10 feet to 5 feet. The applicant is also seeking a variance for an application for driveway entrance and landscape located at 711 Gorman Avenue and 303 Gorman, I mean, I'm sorry, 711 Washington Boulevard and 303 Gorman Avenue, Laurel Merlin 20707. The driveway entrance of the variance will be increased from 25 to 35 feet. And also, the applicant is seeking a variance to the landscape manual around the perimeter. The applicant also will meet the green space for this lot. Under date of September 9, 2020, a cover letters, site plan and justification letter asking for comments were emailed to the local state agencies. No agency had issue with the proposed application. Under date of September 9, 2020, a memorandum asking for comments were emailed to the City of Laurel Department. No department had issues with the proposed application. On September 22, 2020, a letter explaining the nature of the application and advising the scheduled public hearing before the City of Laurel Planning Commission and Board of Appeals was sent by the certified mail to all contingent property owners and all receipts were received. A City of Laurel Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting held on October 15, 2020, the following action was taken on the zoning application. The committee didn't place any restrictions on the project and were in support of the new gas station, special exception 907 with the variance located at 711 Washington Boulevard, 303 Gorman Avenue, with the following condition. The applicant shall obtain a City of Laurel building permit. The applicant shall obtain a City of Laurel electrical permit. The applicant shall obtain a sound permit. And the applicant shall install the proposed landscape to meet the green space on site. The applicant shall install ADA parking spaces for proper signing. The applicant shall obtain a City of Laurel use and occupancy permit. The applicant shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations for the protection of the use of the property. The applicant is also responsible for any improvements required by the Maryland State Highway Administration. The file contains a certification verifying that the application and public hearing was advertised in the October 15, 2020 issue of the Prince George's Post. The file contains an affidavit signed by the applicant testing that a zoning sign has been placed on the subject property has remained and shall remain until a decision is reached by the Board of Appeal. That concludes the reading of the file, Madam Chair, and the applicant is on the phone for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the applicant, are there any questions of the commissioners or President Sidnor of, of Monta?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, on these kinds of things, are the adjacent property owners sent registered mail?
Yes, sir. Everybody, we try to send mail to everyone in a one-mile radius. So the adjacent properties should be acknowledged during this time.
Did we get any response?
Yes. No, we didn't get any response from any adjacent property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would like to now call on Mr. Daniel Lynch. If you would please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Dan Lynch with the Law Firm of McNamee-Hosey, with offices at 6411 Ivy Lane, Greenville, Maryland. Here on behalf of the applicant, and we're excited about this proposal. This application has been, at least on our end, a long time in the making. I'd like to also thank Mr. Burrow for his work on this. Guided us through the city's process, and I think we all ended up in a brokered place as to staff recommendation, as well as the end result as to how this rebuilt gas station will look. Normally, under certain situations, where you have a special exception and you're doing a modification, you just have to obtain a modified site plan. But in this situation, we're not only occupying the property that was originally approved for the special exception, but we're also expanding the use onto the adjacent vehicle sales lot. And you'll see that, and looking at the site plan, that a portion of our proposed convenience store as well as our proposed car wash would be located in the area of that existing vehicle sales lot. This application is one of many projects that my client is proposing. They are refurbishing most of their gas stations in metropolitan area. They sell, for the most part, shell product. And they're going in and reimaging those sites, putting up very attractive buildings and bringing the sites generally into performance with all current regulations, whether that be zoning or storm order management regulations. And let me just touch on storm order management. On a site such as this, which was developed originally back in probably the 70s, storm management was not a requirement. When we go in and do a rebuild on a site such as this, one of the primary things that we do is we do put in regulations and facilities to address the 100-year storm. Whereas rain currently on this site really kind of just sheet flows off it into both Washington Boulevard and Gorman Avenue. So that's one of the real positive things about these redevelopment sites. We also will bring the site in performance with your landscape man requirements, obviously subject to the variance that we filed, and also bringing a performance with some of your modern site design requirements. We widen the driveways, widen the drive aisles, and provide parking in performance with the current zoning requirements. This station, although we're asking for a variance, as Mr. Burrow indicated, the variance, the staff's recommending approval. One of the reasons being is you'll see this is an L-shaped property and that variance really impacts us greater on this property than it would, for instance, on a typically rectangular-shaped property. But overall, we agree with the staff recommendations and the staff conditions of approval. We're excited about this. We're excited to present this to the Planning Commission. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I also have with me Ms. Renee Montgomery with the applicant, as well as our civil engineer, Andrew Lor. So with that, that's our presentation, and we'd happy to answer any questions this board has with regard to the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. And as he stated, we have Mr. Andrew Lor, an engineer, and Ms. Renee, I'm sorry, Ms. Renee Montgomery, available for questions. Are there any questions from commissioners or President Sidnor?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, just a quick question. It looks like the arrangement of the pumps stays approximately the same. Will all that be replaced and the underground tanks replaced as well?
Yeah, all that is going to be replaced. We are adding two additional multi-product dispensers out there. It will, everything will be new. I mean, the base site's going to be scraped. Let me just defer to Mr. Lor. I don't know whether are the underground storage tanks going to be replaced? Are we maintaining the existing tanks?
So they will be replaced. The current existing tanks are in, I guess we'll say, the northeast corner of the Washington Boulevard property, and then they are going to be relocated to that southwest corner by Gorman Avenue and the Washington Boulevard intersection.
And just so you understand, one of the things that we did, we're asking for variance to have a slight increase on the width of one of our driveways. The purpose of that is to allow our tanker trucks to adequately service the site. If we didn't widen that driveway, the tanker trucks couldn't get onto the site.
Yeah, they have a real tough time right now. So it's always interesting to be there pumping gas when the truck comes in. Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Madam Chairman, if I could just make a comment to Mr. Lynch and the applicant.
Mr. Smalls.
I think, Mr. Lynch, that the applicant has a perfect opportunity here to do something other than a cookie cutter kind of project here. There are numerous designs. And to have the option of doing some kind of customized, site-specific design at this highly visible intersection at Route 1 and Gorman, I think could be a testament to the forward-thinking of the applicant and your firm in giving something, again, this is city center for Laurel. So giving the city something that is more than just a run-of-the-mill gas station, and I'm not demeaning your design by any stretch of the imagination. But you said that you're refurbishing gas stations around the region. So an opportunity to do something outside the box, I'd just like to suggest it. I don't have a vote, but I'd just like to suggest that perhaps with all of the different kinds of designs, if it's no more than redesigning the canopies, something that is, that offers something a bit different. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And Mr. Smalls, the one thing I would say is, the building on this site is not a spec building. This building has been designed specifically for this site. That's the thing that's unusual about this particular project. It's actually a rather small building in my client's portfolio. 2,200 square feet is much smaller than we usually provide, and that's why we came up with a spec building as opposed to using buildings designed that we've used on other sites. I'm not sure whether Mr. Burrow has the architecture, but I think the architecture we're proposing on this site is very attractive. Monte, did you bring the architecture?
No, I believe we don't have that, but we can send that email to Councilman Small so he can look at it.
Okay, yeah, so we have put a lot of thought into the architecture on this site. I think it's very attractive. But I think overall, I understand the concern. But on the other hand, one of the points I'd like to make is that this is a significant reinvestment in this property because we're not just redeveloping the existing site, but we are acquiring the adjoining site in order to make it much more attractive than it is today.
Thank you. Thank you both. And yes, I like, like I say, I know it's just conceptual, but the addition of green area, green trees and green space, that's a corner that doesn't have a lot of that. So seeing that added and having a lot of space. So thank you. If there are no further questions, this is, does not require a public hearing because we are making a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. But let me just pause. Are there any other questions or comments from anyone on the line? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve special exception application number 907, Shell gas station at 711 Washington Boulevard slash 303 Gorman Avenue, filed by SMO Incorporated with the recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner. This is for motion for recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman, I will second that.
Go ahead, Mr. Kish.
Thank you. Mr. Kish, Ms. Quillan.
Ms. Bonner.
Yeah.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mr. Wellford.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Chairwoman Bateman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Mr. Lynch, before you hang up, if you're still with us, one thing I was just going to ask. First of all, thank you and best of luck as this project goes forward. Is there an estimate of how long the site will be shut down for the conversion?
Ms. Montgomery's on the line. She probably can answer that better than I. Maybe she's not on the line.
We may.
I am. I'm sorry.
Okay, she's there.
Now you have to push the blue button instead of the little microphone, so you have to get each system down. I'm sorry. We will try to only be down for six months, but it will really depend on the weather and everything else that goes into construction. But we're certainly poised to complete the project as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much and best of luck with this. It's a, it's a unique intersection in the whole DMV area. So thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item five, text amendment number 256, ordinance number 1960, and ordinance amending the Unified Land Development Code, Definitions and Use Tables section. The proposed update is part of a comprehensive review and update of the city's zoning code for recommendation to the mayor and city council. I believe, Ms. Pulley, you are presenting?
That is correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, fellow commissioners. Before you, it's text amendment number 256, ordinance number 1960, proposed to amend various sections as outlined in the technical staff report dated October 7, 2020. Planning staff have been reviewing the Unified Land Development Code to recommend changes for an update. The proposed text amendment is the first part of the comprehensive update with others to come before the commission over the next several months. The last thorough review and approval occurred in 2011. Since that time, the city has updated the master plan, which was approved in 2016. Both the Unified Land Development Code, excuse me.
Hi.
Excuse me, both the Unified Land Development Code and master plan are guiding tools for community and economic development efforts to shape a cohesive and well-balanced community. With the city being the only municipality in Prince George's County that has its own zoning authority, it is vital for planning staff to conduct thorough reviews to ensure the code is current with various community planning trends as well as state legislation. The proposed amendments for this text amendment is to ensure that all users have a definition or update the terminology of the zoning terms used. Also, there are modifications in addition to the various use types, terms, and various sections throughout the code. And also to update the Mexi Use Table and clearly outline the approval process for zoning applications within the zone. Also, we do have a new proposed use for group home adult. And the code outlines the requirements for that use as it will require a special exception. And there are a few other minor changes to the And there are a few other minor changes to the floodplain areas and the pool sections. The overall goal of the comprehensive update is to streamline the document, make it more user-friendly for citizens, business owners and developers, as well as provide flexibility for various use types within the city's zoning districts. It is recommended that the Planning Commission recommend approval of text amendment number 256, ordinance number 1960 to the mayor and city council. Thank you.
Thank you. We each received this, some of us received it in hard copy per our request. Thank you very much. But we have all received this. Are there any questions or discussion for Ms. Pulli or for just the general discussion?
Oh, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think I read through the staff report. I did go through line by line. It was kind of hard to see what changed because I think with the re-paragaphing, everything got noted as a change. So, or almost everything. So it seems to me there was only really two substantial changes, which were changes in the definition. Is that true?
Yes, for this text amendment, Commissioner Wilson, the biggest changes are modifying the use tables as well as trying to ensure that each use has a definition. We did notice that one of the uses does not have a definition, so that would be on the next update. But those were the biggest substantial changes. And then we just, with the MXT zone section, besides modifying the use tables to ensure that the process, the approval process was clearly outlined within it. And then also, group home is a new use that's going to be added to the code, so that was included. And then in our code, pool was as an accessory use, but it's not necessarily accessory use. If you have a pool, it's not considered a use. You just have to make sure you have a building permit and that it's enclosed with the fence. So those were the minor changes for this code update with the substantial ones being the uses for the use table and the definitions.
So the, the group home is something we've always had as a, as a special exception, right?
No, it wasn't in the, so it was called other type of things, but it wasn't specifically a quote-unquote group home. So now it's going to be a new use and then it has the outlined requirements for the special exception process.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you. President Sidnor, did you have any comment? I know that this was presented to the mayor, or discussed, I believe, at a work session for mayor and city council. Any concerns or issues?
No, Madam Clerk, Madam President, we discussed with the director, Pulli. She asked some questions for me one-on-one. I understood what she was doing and the council may have any further questions as well. And we recommended you guys approve this as well.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll recommend approval of text amendment number 256 and the company ordinance number 1960 of the Unified Land Development Code update.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman, I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kish. Ms. Quillen?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, please.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford? Mr. Wilford? Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. There being no more business before us this evening, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Aight, thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Bill.
Nice seeing you, Betsy.